Tuesday, September 15th, our briefing session where we typically discuss calendar items, things, meetings we've been to, or advisory boards that we've been on, or other things that are happening in the community, things we may want to discuss at a work session or at a legislative session, just a very informal briefing session. So with that, I'll have Ron go ahead and get us started, and then we'll just go around. Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Don't have a lot to cover this evening, but one of the things I just wanted to touch base with you all on, on logistics for, it's our turn to host City-County-County Thursday. Right now, we have it advertised as being in-person here, but we also can carry it virtually. So the thought was is that if you were all here in person, then we would sit county commissioners at the four tables, and then back at the other table, and have the portable mics back there for them to use, which would accommodate everybody if they showed up. It's been a long time since we've had all nine of us, elected officials together. So the county has requested time to go over the Spark funds and where they're at with those allocations is the only item that I'm aware of that's on the agenda. So I haven't heard from them whether they're planning to attend in person, or whether they want to attend remotely. I know they've been, well, everybody's been remote for intergovernmental, but they usually set up in their commission room if they participate as a group remotely. So I just wanted to convey to them tomorrow morning that we were planning to meet in person with the option of being able to remote in if that was their desire, and then we would also broadcast it, which we typically don't do for City-County-County meetings, but...
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think we can socially distance here, and they may still want to do it remotely, I don't know. And you never know, other community members, like if they are quarantining or isolating at this point, and they want to be part of that discussion, they should have that option of doing it virtually as well. So unless anybody has a...
As you say, I'm going to have to remote in because I didn't get it on the appointment book, and I'm going to have to pay attention in between patients. So I'll send me the Zoom link when I get one.
Okay, we can do that.
There you go.
All right, very good. The, I gave a little note in one of my updates, I think it was Monday, maybe it was Friday, that we had received word from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that there would be another round of CDBG funds. Verbally, we received notice that we'll get another $305 million of CARES money, oh, I'm sorry, $305,000. I wish it was $305 million. We could do a lot with that. Yes, thank you, Commissioner, $305,000, and it's stipulated to be used for rental and mortgage assistance. So we had identified some of our Spark allocation for that same purpose, so that will make some of our decision-making relative to, gives us some more flexibility on the Spark funds to maybe not have to make so much cuts in order to be able to utilize that. So we're appreciative of that. We haven't got official word on that, and I actually haven't seen anything officially announced on it, so, but we do know it's coming.
Right, good news.
Yep. At today's chamber board meeting, the chamber announced and approved their participation in administering the county's, a portion of the county's business assistance program. So the county allocated about $2.5 million in Spark funds for business grant assistance program. They are contracting with the chamber to administer that program. However, they're doing it a little differently than what we did with them with our money. We're, they're just basically facilitating the applications, and the county's going to actually cut the checks in the agreements with the entities. Right now, they're indicating that it's going to be a maximum of $15,000 per business, and then see how that goes. Similarly, the county has awarded $500,000 for not-for-profit entities, and they've made arrangements with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation to administer that program. That, that they have had information on their website up, and starting tomorrow, they go live to start receiving applications on a first, first-come, first-served basis, and they're allowing up to $25,000 maximum per organization. So right now, we don't have any meeting planned for that fifth Tuesday in September this month for the work session, so, and I don't see any need, at least right now, to be a reason to have that. Let's see, also, the League, Kansas League of Municipalities, announced that they're doing a kind of a virtual conference. Some of, some components are going to be live, some of them are going to be taped for you to be able to observe on your own. They are charging a registration fee of $119 per person. If four or more from any entity register at the same time, it's only $99 per person, so there's a $20 savings there. So I know at least one commissioner has indicated they plan to, would like to participate in that, and so if there are others, you could just let us know, and we'll try and save some funds as we can. I think the registration deadline was, I want to say it's the 26th, maybe, of this month, in order to get that lower rate. I think that's, I think that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thanks a lot, Ron. When is, what is, what are the dates for the Kansas League of Municipalities? You said registration is September 26th?
It's October 13th through the 16th, that, that week. And I, in my understanding, they haven't come up with the full schedule, but there will be, everything's going to be taped, and I think available for several months, but there will be some live components that you could Zoom into, but there are others that are taped sessions that you could do at your leisure.
Okay, sounds great. We'll just go around, and Jason?
Just wanted to provide you an update on the Aggieville garage. I know we had that GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price, on this agenda, and in our efforts, our design has lagged a little bit on the exterior and in the alley. They did go out and get pricing for the precast materials. So if we would have went with something for tonight, it really just would have been about a third of the overall total. So we gave guidance to just go back, get the complete package together. That'll be November. You will see a change order that'll allow us to enter into a design with the precaster. It's about $150,000. It should be on the October 6th agenda, and that'll allow us to secure that precaster and continue that design for that GMP in November. And that'll also keep us for a December start construction, and the precast materials would then start arriving about February or March. So that construction period would stay on, on target as well. Just wanted to give you that overview, because again, that was scheduled for this evening, and we moved that.
So it's for a change order, you're saying? There's going to be a change order on October 6th?
Yeah, the next meeting will have a change order, and that'll be specific to the shop drawings that we need to finalize with the precast company for the construction and the materials that they ship. If you paid any attention to the parking garage going in for the hotel at 12th and Blumont, they had a lane of Blumont. It's still shut down, but that's where the trucks would actually bring in, the material and the crane would offload, and they tinker-toyed that, that garage together in pieces, and that, that's essentially the same construction method we'll use for the parking garage south of Rally House.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Brent, Tammy? Good? Thank you.
I do have a couple items. One in particular, we were approached by Link to see if the city and the university were open to extending their operating hours. Currently, right now, they're in operation from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. They are seeing peak ridership in the community from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. On average, they're getting about 1,130 rides per day, and about 477 of those occur from that 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so almost half. And a lot of you even noticed you'd seeing some of those rides carry on past 10:00 PM. That's because if you rent a scooter before 10:00 PM, it'll stop once you end the ride. So someone could, you know, for example, ride it for 30 minutes into 10:30. And they're seeing about 76 rides per day that start right before the operating hours end, and then extend into that. Per the agreement, based on, you know, mutual agreement with the city, they can't extend those hours. They wanted to, you know, reach out to the city. They're also reaching out to the university to see if that's something we'd be willing to consider. So we're getting that information. I also reached out to Captain Fink. I haven't heard back from him yet, just to see from his perspective how enforcement's going, if they're seeing any problems with ridership at the nighttime. I haven't heard back from him, but we'll forward that along. So I wanted to just possibly gauge anyone's opinion on that.
Well, just to add to that, we did have a meeting yesterday with the university administration. This was a topic they brought up. They're evaluating the request. They'd like us to both be on the same page with that.
Yep.
And so they're actually asking for some more data from Link relative to other university communities, and they're a little bit concerned with it, just because the majority of the traffic is going to Aggieville, means they're going to stay in the bars another hour, and so they're evaluating it from another, a number of different perspectives, and to see whether or not that's something that they want to support. So they're, they're asking for more information, and whether or not there's more, I think our accident rate has been very good, as far as not having very many, and to see, you know, are there more accidents if you run later? So, but clearly, the, a lot of them are using it to, for transportation, and a lot of them are both off-campus and on-campus at the dorms, or taking them, taking them down to Aggieville about that time. So a lot of people don't even head down there until after 10:00. So anyway, that's something they're really looking at and evaluating, and so the discussion was that they were going to go back to the company and ask for some additional information before making that decision.
How long did they want it open later? That's what I want to know.
11, so one hour, just to kind of continue that process through while people are continuing to ride at night. This is common from, from what they see in other communities, just from the peak ridership. As most of you guys are aware, with jobs, when's your leisure time? It's usually in the evening, so the leisure ridership kind of increases in the evening, whereas people who are trying to really get, use it as a mode of transportation are using it during the day.
I think it's best to wait and see what happens in the next month or two. I mean, if they're done at 10:00 and they're going to 10:30 or 11:00, if you stop at 11:00, they're going to go to 11:30 or 12:00, is what I would imagine.
It's possible, yeah.
But I'd like to just wait on that, because we do see a lot of people during, at nighttime when they're riding, and it's very hard, because they just kind of zoom out at you if they're going on the road, for you to stop, because you all, you see this little light coming your way. So I'd be reluctant to approve anything. Maybe town down, we can, the group can look at it a little bit closer and analyze the data, and also what's happening in other communities.
Sure. And it's something they just wanted to, the city and the university consider. I've had conversations with Adrian Tucker, who kind of manages the K-State side of things. So we'll continue to, as we get more data and information about that, we'll pass that along.
While we're on that scooter subject, Jared, would you, so one of the things that we've had some complaints on is just where people leave the scooters.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things they, that, we told you in the, in the discussion was that, you know, there'd be fines and stuff if people didn't return them to where they were supposed to. My understanding is that that, they haven't actually implemented that software package, but I think they're getting ready to do that, so...
Okay. I thought they were, okay, that would be good.
So fines was, you know, something that was always part of the discussion in the RFP process. Link's approach wasn't necessarily that, and per the agreement, we don't have a set fine structure right now. We do have certain areas that are set up as designated parking zones, so if you leave it in a designated, or it's a designated no-ride, no-parking zone, so Triangle Park is a good example. Someone wanted to leave the scooter in Triangle Park, they wouldn't be allowed to end their ride, and it would continue to charge them, in essence a fine. So they're working through those, they're trying to work with the members of the public and in the community to educate them. A lot of people, you know, see them parked on people's property, that's allowed if it's your property. A lot of people are riding them to their homes, so, you know, what you may see is a scooter in someone's driveway is probably their, that's where their ride ended, and Link's okay with that, because they may wake up the next morning and hop on it to get elsewhere. So they're rebalancing it. They, they realize that if a scooter hasn't moved within 24 hours, they're going to rebalance it back to one of the hubs and things like that. They're, they're working on upgrading that geofencing plan, though, to add more of those no-parking, no-ride zones, so that we're definitely not getting scooters parked where they're not supposed to be, so...
I would like to say they're parked, but a lot of times I just see them down on Anderson and such. They're just like, not even on the sidewalk, they're just on the ground. And I don't know if it's because they realized, oh my God, it's $10 already, I need to stop right now, and then they drop it, or what happens? But they're, and then I don't know who picks it up and takes, goes off with it, but it's in the way, and I don't know how long some of these are in the way. But I do see them all over town, and I'm just hoping that the employees they hired are kind of picking them up at night, or whatever their shifts are, and gathering, because I do see that truck or that little van that they have.
Yeah, they got multiple vans. They have 10 employees total, and they have three shifts throughout the day who are patrolling the university, Aggieville downtown, the main corridors like Dennison and North Manhattan Avenue, where you see a lot of that traffic. Anyone can submit a ticket if they see that. Usually, I heard from Evan, who's the operations manager, their response time on those is usually less than an hour, which our agreement stipulates that they got to address those within two hours, so that's good. But, but they're constantly trying to patrol, you know, the high-traffic areas, and when they see those, of course, they're, they're addressing the sidewalks specifically to make sure that those aren't obstructing the sidewalks.
Yeah, I'm sure it's hard to manage.
Linda Mars, I am kind of surprised that they're calibrating. I expected them to have experience in this and to adjust easily to what our, you know, what happens in our community. I didn't realize, so do they have fees in, I mean, doesn't sound like they're that experienced. Are they in, they're not new, I know that name, for the last year or two.
Are you talking about the fee structure, or picking up, picking them up? There's no fines or anything, is that I just learned?
Well, that's on us. It's not the scooter company to decide who gets fined, so, I mean, but they have a role in making sure that their system works well for our community, so that's what I'm speaking to.
So as you know, they were, Link acquired Zagster, who was a fleet management company, and, I mean, from my understanding, they've been doing quite a good job so far. I, I know that it's not perfect, especially compared to the other companies that we interviewed that really rely on the gig economy, where people can work whenever they want. They're actually, you know, employing W-2 paid employees to constantly be on the lookout for this, so I think that's been a benefit compared to other companies. And I know it's just, you know, unfortunately, right now, we haven't been able to do an in-person education campaign to teach people how to ride, to show up at events, to show a lot of these users who are out in the public how to park, where to park, how to ride, so it's just, from their experience, it takes time, and it takes people to learn, you know, how these are used, so... They have been pleased with the ridership and how people have, you know, treated the scooters and used the scooters in the first month, compared to other cities that they've been in.
Yeah, well, they're pretty popular.
I might have misspoke about the fine. That's not real accurate, so the incentive is, is, and I think what they're starting to move towards is the messaging that the rider will get, is that this is not a place to leave the scooter, and if you leave it here, the charge will continue to go up to a maximum dollar amount, as the message to them. So it's not necessarily a fine, but the charges will continue unless they take it to someplace that they're supposed to take it to. And that's part of what wasn't initiated. Part of it was an education period, just to learn how to use it, and then also, like Jared said, you know, in this COVID experience, they weren't able to do a lot of the in-person events that they'd hoped to.
Right. How long have we had them, a month?
Roughly.
One month of the day, actually.
One month today, and we have $4,000 for the city? Is that what the revenue, did we collect about $4,000 or $5,000?
It's probably much more in the first month. Last Tuesday, I had said numbers were around $4,000, and that's probably doubled, I guess. Maybe a little bit less, I know we had a rainy week, but, yeah, things are going well. And we're doing a monthly reporting system that's going to start. We agreed with K-State that we'd have our monthly reporting go out at the beginning or end of each month, as opposed to, you know, they started mid-month, so we're, that first report here at the end of October, or the beginning of October, will come to you all about ridership revenues and all of that.
That's great.
Mm-hmm. And the only other thing I had, unless there are other questions about e-scooters, was, yes?
It may not, Commissioner Hattas, it may be more of a policy question. I know the money's supposed to be going into, or is going, is going into the city/university fund. It just seems to me that this is going to be an ideal place to get money for the bike ped budget line item, because if we're going to get seven or eight thousand bucks a month, potentially during the good months, we could end up with 50,000 bucks a year, which would be a significant, well, it's not going to widen highways or anything like that, but it would do a lot towards some of the smaller things that, that the bike, bike ped plan kind of envisioned. So we might want to, at some point, rethink that a little bit, simply because that, that might be a good source of income that makes a little bit of sense. It comes from not really bikes or pedestrians, but similar type things, and the people that use that might also be bicyclers and such that would appreciate that, those improvements. So just keep that in mind a little bit.
It's a great point, Commissioner, and if you recall, we did, we're in design right now with Olson on that city/university project for the three signals on North Manhattan Avenue at Vatier, Thurston, and Petticoat, upgrading those to full-traffic signals. And then if you also recall, we're working on 30% designs to work on a cycle track for that north-south leg of Manhattan, which is a bike ped project that is one of the number-one priorities of that bike plan, and this would go really in line with that, so it is something that we've been talking about.
And if it's already sort of earmarked for bike ped plans through the university fund, then I probably, it doesn't need to be anything separate, but, yeah, I was, yeah, that is, that would be a fine use. If we run out of projects like that, then maybe some other time we could earmark it for that, so...
Yeah, my only comment is, you know, before, I'd like to see them extend the hours. We need to refine that geofencing, because I've gotten some complaints that the scooters are being taken to places where they shouldn't, and, you know, my understanding was they were going to get that down, so we need to, we need to nail that geofencing down. And then the, the fact that people will be charged for putting them where they're not supposed to be left, that that needs to be in there, because that was part of the original plan, and if it hasn't happened yet, that's not good. And a third point is, you provided the number, you can call the company to say, hey, there's a scooter in the wrong place, and it's been put out on social media, but it would be nice, and I don't know if it's possible, if we added that to that city-reported thing, where, you know, you could have the dropdown menu, and it wouldn't go to any city staff, because it's not your job to deal with that, but if it could be linked right to their administration, then, you know, the people that keep sending me notes about where scooters are left, I could just tell them, you know, put the reported app on there, use the dropdown menu, and then it would go straight to the people that can fix it, but I don't, because the city, you know, not involved in that. And a lot of people don't understand that, and they send me notes saying, you know, your scooters, not my scooters, you know? So we need to be sure that we've got a way to communicate that, and I think that'll solve a lot of issues. Plus, I think it'd be a service to that company, because then they'd know, you know, where the citizen complaints are about where the scooters are left, or where they're being ridden when they're violating where we thought geofencing was in place.
Yeah.
And I think that would be easy enough to do, but I'm not the technical expert on the reported app, but I like that app, it's outstanding.
We are working on that reported app function. Report is a third party, and then we need to get, what's, what's, we're working on is we need to get Link an account through our account that, so we're working on that. And then, of course, if there are specific emails that you get related to geofencing, so that we can pass that along to them directly, if there's a specific area, they appreciate that, and they'll work on getting those updates.
Yeah, I just send it to them, because you gave me their email and their phone, so I didn't want to burden you guys with more work. You've got enough to do.
Yep.
There was something else, Jared?
Yeah, last thing I had, real quickly, is we're just working on finalizing the 0.5% sales tax webs, city website with all the information about the sales tax, so that way we can carry out an educational campaign here over September and October, similar to what we did last year. We'll do, you know, multiple insider articles related to the sales tax. Jason, myself, and Vivian will promote it on, or educate on Monday in Manhattan, as well as our social media platforms, so... And then we, of course, we have there on the website that we're happy to go to any virtual or in-person speaking engagements, if there are groups out there who are interested in learning about the sales tax. So hopefully, we'll have that out here this week.
Maybe more Zoom meetings than in-person.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on that. I sent a note to the staff, Ron, I think shared it transmittal, trying to explain what the workforce housing thing was, in a very broad, and I put, I think, four examples there, and I'm not hard over on anything, it was just sort of a straw man to get the commissioner to look at that, but I think it's very important that we, you know, agree on one, you know, concept, and then stick with it, so that we don't end up with, you know, something the staff puts on the website, and then the five of us say something different. It all has to be, you know, one voice. And so I'd appreciate, you know, if you give, give the staff feedback on that, and I'm not, I'm not hard over, that was just some, some thoughts, but, but I do agree with the concept that we really can't nail it down to, you know, every little specific, simply because the money won't be available for a couple of years, and things will change then, so we need, you know, just a general, more like a vision statement of this is what we intend to do, and that's what I tried to do with that, so, and that's why that's out there.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking at, but I, I think because we still have to have that broad discussion, I think kind of defining what it, what it is might be good at some point. But, yeah, I haven't seen it yet. Nobody's asked me about it yet.
It's in the mail folder.
No, I meant about the housing outside. I saw the note in the mail folder. Jared, anything else? Thank you.
Dennis Mars, Assistant City Manager. I did want to bring up one issue in the mail folder last night, I believe, is we had mentioned earlier that we're going to move to a contract phase for a public awareness campaign related to COVID and masking and a whole bunch of different things people can do in the community to promote health and safety. So we've actually entered into two agreements. One is with the agency, we announced bajillion out of Topeka, and it's for no more than, or up to $75,000, and that will have a target audience of larger communities, seniors, Fort Riley, K-State, but it will have a multifaceted multimedia component. There will be some video components for Facebook ads, Google ads, all kinds of social media ads, but as well as maybe billboards, even some mailers. It will be a very broad and encompassing campaign, and that will kick off, we're doing some of the design work on that now, and kind of concepts on that now. There's also a second contract you'll see in your mail folder, I think was also last night, with New Boston, and it's for an amount... And it's for an amount not to exceed 65,000, and it is specific to masking. And so we actually contributed back in spring with the Metalarc Foundation and some other community groups via Christie Hospital to do a mask campaign, which resulted in President Myers from K-State Warriors Wear Mask campaign. We're going to build off of that campaign now with New Boston. It'll be six videos. It will be social media intensive, and the target audience will be specifically K-State students and K through 12. So they both have similarities, but very structured nuances with different target audiences. And so that will be in development stage now. They're working on the six videos now, and then they'll condense it down for social media, et cetera. Both of those contracts will use the Spark cares funds for the funding amount for those. And just wanted you to be aware that there are two contracts out there, two different agencies, two different concepts and focus.
So they have been...
Those are going to be funded through the Spark money?
Correct.
Okay, that makes it a little bit better. I've got a number of complaints on that. I'm not, I'm not real enthusiastic about it myself. I think it's a day late and a dollar short at this point. You know, that might have made sense maybe in April, but at this point, I think everybody understands the mask thing. They're either for it, or they're against it, or they don't care one way or the other. But I don't think education's going to make any difference now. I think it's a waste of money personally.
So the Spark, there's two contracts, you said, for one focused also on K-12 and K-State, and I think that's important. And hopefully, they are also getting some funds on their end also to help with some of the campaign, because that's a lot of 6,000 students and then, you know, 20-odd, some thousand students at K-State. And K-State is most of our workforce that are working in all our businesses, so we want to make sure everybody's aware of the policies. And for the larger community, I'm more interested in what that looks like and the details. So you said you put it in our mail folder today?
We put the contract information that we're moving forward with New Boston. You'll see the bajillion contract information, I think, this week. And so just to make sure you know that those are out there. And then we're working on the concept phase for the larger one. We've had the concept phase with New Boston for just a masked one to continue some of what they've already started back in spring.
Okay, sounds good. And I'm looking forward to Thursday's meeting, where we can have more discussions about the Sparks fund and the details. I've been confused on so many levels with that. I keep watching the Sparks meetings that they're having in Topeka, and also following the Riley County ones. But each county's kind of doing their own thing, and I'm kind of lost in the mix with all of them.
And with the Thursday meeting, the city-county-county, I think Tammy Robinson is scheduled from Riley County to speak. She'll give her perspective. And then next Tuesday for our workshop, we'll do some more specific city Sparks anticipated spending with you all next Tuesday.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot, Dennis.
Yeah, but both of these expenditures are really just fall under the city staff's ability to approve that, right? It's not going to require a commission vote, because it's already been empowered to the city manager and the staff to handle that. So I think that's important, that everybody out there understands that, because when we passed that ordinance that allowed the city manager to make expenditures up to $75,000 without the commission voting, and a lot of folks out there don't understand that. When they see this, they say, what are you guys doing on the commission? Well, we're not voting on it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because it was in your transmittal. So when we do these contracts under the city manager's authority, we always send it out to the commission in the transmittal, and this one went out yesterday, so I want to bring your attention to that. And then you'll see the next one for bajillion, so.
Yeah, but I don't think the commission has the ability to veto it, do they?
I'm not sure it would have been vetoed.
I just wanted to make a quick comment about that. I think we're a little bit losing, feels like we're losing a little bit of the perspective that we had. And one of the things I think I heard Dennis mention was this face-mass education builds off of face-mass education that began, like you said, back in April. So it's not that we didn't do it then, but it's also a timing issue with the cares and the Spark money. We've had these discussions. We've even had discussions where I've heard other commissioners talk about this should be awarded to somebody local for the face-mass education. So it seems kind of like, if there's misconceptions in the public, we need to clarify if we're putting information out, that this is just a continuation of what has been in the plan. We can't control necessarily the timing. And the county awarded that as part of our request when we put in for things that we would potentially do from the city. Is that right?
Yeah, it was part of our package. And obviously, we just did get feedback from the county that we can, again, there was some confusion on that aspect, too, because we thought they submitted our spreadsheet to the state. They did not. They just submitted our per capita amount. So again, we have to ultimately decide what some of those programs are that we're going to fund, and that's something we'll be visiting with you about regularly. But these were some we had talked about before, and we thought they were worthwhile ventures.
And the other caveat to that, that we might lose sight in, is part of the Spark and the cares funds process, the expenditures have to happen before the end of the year, or the money gets turned back over to the state, to the federal, and it's lost, and it can't be used for other purposes that aren't COVID-related. So I think that we just kind of lose sight of that. I've seen some of the social media uproar just about this, and it's, it's kind of, to me, seems like a misunderstanding of what has happened in that particular event.
Yeah. I'm not sure it's a surprise. I mean, I've seen them discuss it at the Recovery Task Force plenty of times. I've seen our discussions with the universities, so I'm not sure. I think it's the same conversation we're going to have for a while, but I'm glad we're moving forward. Katie? Brenda? Thank you. Aaron?
The, I have a few things. So continuing, I mentioned before that MLK Committee has started canvassing the 17th Street. Feedback on that has been positive. And just in case you guys get questions about it, I think it's worthy to know that it's that MLK Committee, and they can be, you know, those questions can be directed back to their chair, Kevin Bryan, or somebody associated with that, that it's not, it's not, it helps to be aware, I guess, in case you get questions of people knocking on doors. I have a couple of questions about, and I don't know if, you know, we've gotten some emails about parades, holiday parade, and Veterans Day parade. I imagine that'll be something on our radar later on. I haven't seen anything specifically other than a couple of emails.
It's usually not our decision. I think each one has its own group that makes those decisions, and they have to go through the permit process for any one of those.
Okay, yeah.
In the past, that's how it's been.
I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something, that there hadn't been a decision made on any of that.
No.
Okay. The Reported app, I mentioned, I got some feedback that there's an anonymous feature on there, and the potential, I think, making sure that that's anonymous when it's being used by people, that it's identifiable. It seems like a technological backend issue. If somebody's using that Reported app, and they are marking anonymous, then are they truly anonymous if they're, you know, being followed up with or other things? And we can, I just have an open-ended question about that. Should it, if somebody uses that, and, or should the anonymous thing not even be an option? Because it's not truly, it's leaving people that can be identified.
Can Jared talk to you a little?
Yeah, I don't know.
Commissioner, are you asking about public versus private reports, or the user actually being anonymous? So when you create a report, you can make it public, so that it shows up on a map, and then people can go look at that map on our website, and it'll say that there was a weeds report at this location, and they can kind of see the details. Whereas if it's private, it's only seeable by staff and that individual who did the report.
I think the question from the, I guess, complaint that I received was that if they're able to market anonymous, then their intent was that nobody could see it, right? Not staff, not anybody. And if that's not possible, which it makes a lot, there's a lot of good reasons why that shouldn't be possible, then it needs to be more clear in the way that they identify that, or removed from an option. Just something to think about. Or if you, the last thing I had, well, to kind of follow up with Commissioner Butler's comment about the housing, I think that makes a lot of sense to kind of see how things proceed, and that there is potential for more input from a housing board into parameters of that. But I appreciated that response that Ron had put in that note about that. So I, I don't, I don't feel like we need to go beyond what's already been presented to the community, but that's where I'm at. The last thing is a question on the update for the strategic plan.
We are working on that internally, and I think we've tentatively got it scheduled to bring an outline, to have an RFP to you on October 6.
Yep. So we have an internal group working on the draft. It'll be a request for qualifications to hire a consultant. Pretty basic outline of, you know, looking for those qualified firms or consultants who can help us, guide us through a facilitated strategic plan internally and in the community. And that'll be on the October 6 agenda to seek authorization, so we can actually go out on that RFQ. RFQ will be active for 30 days, and then it'll close based on the tentative timeline on November 6. And that'll allow a selection committee, just like the standard process. We can have one or two city commissioners serve on that selection committee, and then we can hopefully come back at the meeting before Thanksgiving to select and authorize negotiation with a consulting firm. And then through the end of November and December, we can negotiate that scope of services, which will really be the crux of all that information of what we're expecting of that firm, and what the process will look like, so we can get that in time, to be, that agreement to be approved in December. And then the plan is, you know, hopefully, at that city commissioner retreat in January, that can kind of be the kickoff meeting with the consultant, the city commission, and the city manager's executive team to really outline what that plan, or what that process is going to look like over the course of three to six months.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jared. Linda?
I thought I would update you. I attended a meeting of the Riley County Social Services, Social Service Agencies on the 9th. The fit closet location where you can drop off clothes for, and they're targeted for students at the 383 schools, but the new location to drop them off is 2031 Casement Road. And that's the new USDA 383 utility maintenance at Casement Road and Allen Road intersection. And there's a new program in town called Be Able, B-E and A-B-L-E. It's a day center for people who return to this community or are in this community and have no place to go. And it could be that they're out of a mental institution, or, you know, just have no real purpose, and perhaps they got out of the Riley County jail with, after 30 days or something. So there's, this is a new concept. And it's located at, I saw the sign that was up for the first time the other day called the Old Sears Building, and it's at 4th and Houston. And so it was the first time I'd seen it called that.
So it's not like a shelter?
No, it's only open like 9:03 or 9:04 each day, and somebody will be there the whole time. A man named Scott Voos, V-O-O-S, uh-huh, and he's the staff person that's there. Dominique Saunders with the Mutual MHK and Northview Rising, they're working on getting a functional kitchen in the Eisenhower Recreation Center. And so they're going to be talking to the, just trying to get more interest in that. Let me just say it that way, I guess. And Michael Wilson, who's the Mobility Manager at the ATA, says that, wanted to just reiterate that there's a shortage of bus drivers, and that they will train for the commercial driver's license and give a $1,000 sign-on bonus. They're pretty desperate, so I think that criteria speaks to that. The, also, the State Board of Education was talked last week with the Board of Regents about aligning the academic calendars of, for both organizations. And the big picture selling point was to align spring break and throughout the state. I don't know what you think of that. I think it seems a little odd that somebody in Bird City, Kansas, would need to align with the calendar in Manhattan. But it's something that you need to think about just a little bit and see if, what you think about that. Is it better that the school district board controls the calendar, or that somebody at the state level? I just think it's an emerging issue, and you'll probably hear more about it during the legislature, I would imagine, given that they've just raised it. And Topeka, the city council in Topeka is considering putting unpaid utility taxes, and that would be like unpaid water and sewer bills, on property tax bills, in order to assure that they get paid, rather than taking it through the collection process, which doesn't pay off always. So, you know, that doesn't work for renters so much as it does for property owners. I don't know how they administer it. It'll be interesting to see their bill, or what their ordinance, if they even do it. I mean, there's no guarantee. Maybe they're just talking about it, I'm not sure. And I do plan to go to the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference, meaning virtually. If it were required, I would not, I would not physically go. But I think it's important to connect with other cities and see what they're doing. Like in Sedgwick County, you may know today, the county health director has withdrawn the voluntary compliance for masks and social distancing in the bars, and has, is really getting firm in mandating. And so they have a big problem in Wichita. And so I think a community reacts only when things are out of control. And that article I read talked about it being out of control. So there are other ways to think about, I mean, other communities have more serious issues than we do. Hard to believe.
We have our own, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Always give a good update. I was at the Riley County Mental Health Task Force last week. Robyn Cole reported that they had received $700,000 in their, I think their third installment for 2021 for the Stabilization Center. So over the past three years, they received a total of $2.1 million. And I remember when we first started talking about this, we had nothing. We didn't have a site, we didn't have staff, we didn't have anything. So we, and they're documenting how many people are coming, how many people have Medicaid, how many have other insurance, and how many don't have insurance. So we still need to work with our legislators, trying to make sure people have insurance of some kind, because there's a lot of need out there. They also received a grant for telemedicine grant. None of the counties, all the counties funded Pawnee, and Pawnee only requested that their funding stayed the same as last year. So no, none of the counties gave them less than what they had requested, although they only requested what they had last year. Bren, the coresponder, also spoke for a little bit. She said... She said number of calls were down for the stabilization center. Um, they also don't have a jail intern currently and they'll be, that was on a grant. So hopefully they get somebody soon. And that the stabilization center has been helpful for keeping people out of jail and people out of the ER room. And also they're going to keep track of how many people didn't have to go to Lornard or Osawatomie because eventually that's the kind of data our legislators are looking for uh, to see how, um, how effective it has been to keep people from being hospitalized and for using the jail system as a mental, um, institution of some kind. The recovery task force, and I'm sure most of you already paid attention to what was going on there. Uh, there was at length, again, another discussion about mental health, um, especially as it relates to COVID. There was also childcare was brought up again. So there's, uh, people working on childcare, uh, issues also during this time. The hybrid model is working for some folks and for some folks that's still a challenge because of childcare. And, um, so they're going to look at those a little bit closer. Ron already mentioned about the Chamber of Commerce meeting and the spark, uh, two point five million dollars of sparks money that they were allotted and the distributing of fifteen thousand dollars in grant for each applicant if they are eligible. There are several per net parameters. So if they received funds from a different federal agency related to COVID, they can't double dip and get another fifteen thousand or some, some more money. So they have to be keeping a close eye on who is applying and not, um, getting another portion of the same federal, um, federal funds that are out there. Uh, they also allotted, I, I think about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for administrative costs so they can actually hire somebody else to help them facilitate, um, spending or authorizing the, how to give the money out to our businesses. So if you're out there and you're a business, please contact the chamber. And if you haven't received other types of federal money, or even if you have and you're not sure if you're eligible, I would highly suggest you reach out and, um, apply for those funds. That's your taxpayer money. They had a good discussion about Bev Hub, which we're going to be discussing tonight. The Leaders Retreat is in January, as we know, uh, and it is going to be, uh, in town. We're not sure if it's going to be virtual or not yet, or if it's going to be in person. They typically have a business awards night in October, which is in person and hundreds of people come. Uh, but this time they're also going to be doing that virtually uh, and are still working on the logistics of that. Last night, there was a race and reconciliation, um, focus group. About eighty people, uh, attended and I think we were also on that and it had breakout sessions, which is great on Zoom and, um, a lot of good discussions. And I thought it was very informative, seven to nine, um, good to connect with everybody. And again, we need to all do our part and make sure people take the census. Uh, I think we have maybe seventy percent that have taken it right now, but our funds are so dependent on our population. So whatever organizations or, uh, whatever groups you're hanging out with, make sure we reach out to every single person to take that census. That's just so important. Uh, with that, I will let, um, Mark have a chance at what he wants to say. Got nothing. When?
Hey, just three holiday questions. I got an email today wanting to know about Halloween and trick or treating.
I don't know anything about it.
Is anybody planning on putting any restrictions on that? I hope not. I mean, I think everybody can make their own choice on that. And I don't know about the business districts. I know sometimes they've had, uh, you know, events where the kids trick or treat before the homecoming parade. I don't think there's a homecoming parade. But, you know, there, there's some people that are questioning, you know, are we going to try to restrict that? To my knowledge, no. The, uh, Veterans Parade, they, they sent out a message on that. I guess you got that. That, that'll take place. There won't be a, there won't be a reviewing stand, but there'll be a, a parade, uh, you know, as usual, maybe a little bit smaller and, and participation. And I guess, uh, city staff told me Engine One will be available. And I'll try to get the flags on it and add a Space Force flag for, for this year since we got a new branch and we'll see if we can get that done. And then the other question is the lighted Christmas parade. There was some confusion with DMI at first thinking it wasn't going to happen. I assume it is going to happen.
That's actually, Mary Beth Kiefer contacted me. Usually she has her meeting like in, um, in the summertime in August. And, uh, so I told her, we contacted Julie Gibbs because they, she has to work through all of those permits pieces also, uh, just like Janet did. So I, I left it up to Mary Beth because this is mostly about the Flint Hills bread backs and collection of food. And, uh, if the parade happens, so be it if that's the direction they want to go. But Mary Beth is more focused on the collection of food.
Because DMI normally runs it. I talked to Gina. She does all the coordination for it, so.
Right. And Mary Beth isn't in contact with Gina. So I don't know if the parade's going to happen or not, but that's not on us to decide, I don't think.
Well, they think it is. That, that, that's why I'm bringing it up. I mean, their question was, it's called the Mayor's Lighted Christmas Parade and they were thinking, well, if you're not interested in pushing it, then maybe you don't want the parade to happen. Maybe they haven't told it to you that bluntly, but that's the information I got.
It is a...
I think, I think we need to have the lighted Christmas parade.
That's...
We need to tell DMI, go forward with it, put in the right stuff to the health department and all that and do it like we always have. And I'm sure it'll be not quite as big this year and not as much participation, but, uh, we don't need to put a damper on Christmas. I mean, let's get going here.
I think the Christmas is more than just about the parade. But, you know, I think that's a conversation you also have to have with Mary Beth Kiefer. And that's the discussion we've been having. She's the one who usually organizes all of it. But if it is about the parade, go through all the permits, do everything you need to do.
Okay. So, so if DMI is listening out there, we can say, drive on?
She gave me all the things. I said I have the same concerns that she does.
Maybe I better get some, huh?
It's not, I don't think it's a discussion that...
And they're certain, so.
It's a group discussion typically and she has to go through that whole process. It's not a decision we make.
Yeah, I know, but they're, they're behind the power curve right now. Normally we get...
I don't think it's our decision. I've never had to make a decision about a parade any other year.
Yeah, I know. That, that's what confused me, but they, they felt like, okay, you know, they wanted to hear the commission say, go for it.
It's not our decision.
That's what I'm asking you to do is say, okay.
We're not going to stand in the way.
Okay, good.
So the, the trick or treating, is the zoo going to do their trick or treat thing? Anybody have any ideas?
I don't think they've decided yet.
Okay.
I've not seen, uh,
Well, they still got it.
our internal provision for them to, to do what they typically do. And they would, we would require them to do their own plan and that would have to be submitted. So, I mean, I, I, again, you know, we haven't, obviously we have been involved in the holiday parade and the tree lighting and, and all of those things that would involve staff. But it's not, none of the, the, the permits do not involve the commission. The commission did rescind a permit, you might recall, for St. Patrick's Day. And you have that authority to do, but that was, it's all going to be based on where we are and as we get closer to those times. But, and so the planning for those, I think, can move forward just under the understanding that we don't know where we'll be as a, as disease spread in the community at those times. That may lead to the health director rescinding those permits like they did for the sororities and the fraternities in September.
Yeah, there's, I don't have a problem with that. I just think that if we, if we wait, we're not going to get this off the ground.
Just, I, real quick on the Halloween, West Loop does their spooktacular thing. Uh, and they've, and they've begun the process of going through those channels with, uh, the health department to see if there's a plan in place and if there's business interest. So West Loop may be working, uh, something for Halloween as well.
None of those are, say that we have any, we don't do those, but, okay. Um, I think, oh, it's almost time to start our meeting. It is seven o'clock, maybe in a minute. Okay, uh, it is Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, and we are having our legislative session, city commission meeting. Uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, with that, let's see, we don't, we have a couple of proclamations this afternoon. Um, one is the recovery month and, uh, we have Robin Cole, uh, executive director from Pawnee to accept the proclamation. And Brenda, would you please read the proclamation out loud for us?
Whereas behavioral health is an essential, is an essential part of health and overall wellness and prevention works, treatment is effective and people can do and recover from substance, substance use and mental disorders. It is critical to educate our policymakers, friends and family members, healthcare providers and businesses that substance, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable and that people should seek assistance for these conditions with the same urgency as they would any other health condition. The physical distancing and other public health measures that are being implemented nationwide due to COVID nineteen are important for reducing transmission of the virus. They may be essentially difficult for people in recovery because they limit access to meetings of peer support groups and other sources of social connection and social support is crucial for those in recovery from a substance use disorder since social isolation is a risk factor for relapse. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy and Pawnee Mental Health Services observe Recovery Month to raise awareness and understanding of recovery from substance use and mental disorders. Usher Ready, mayor of the city of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby declare September twentieth as Recovery Month in Manhattan and call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Manhattan to recognize the importance of recovery and to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use and mental disorders and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, nice to see you, Robin. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Yes, and it's faced this way. So does she talk that way?
Either way, I would turn my voice inside.
So I wanted to say, first of all, thank you, mayor and commissioners, for proclaiming September as Recovery Month. And what a strange September this is. Um, I, I've been here lots of times and have never seen anything like this before. But, um, you know, the, the COVID pandemic certainly is contributing to the need for us to really think about Recovery Month. And different people are experiencing mental health concerns for lots of different reasons. Certainly some of those reasons are related to health and mortality issues related to the virus. Some of that stress and some of those mental health, uh, issues are related to economic loss, um, related to social isolation, as the proclamation indicated. And those can all be contributing factors to relapse, which is part of why it's so important for us to be thinking about prevention during the month of September. The, the other, um, major mental health-related, uh, event or occurrence this month also is that this is also Suicide Prevention Month, uh, which is sort of tucked in with relapse prevention. And we've seen that, um, that there are increased risks to suicide um, under this current climate that we live in. And because in ninety percent of the cases where there's a suicide, there is a mental illness. The issue of relapse and mental illness and relapse from substance abuse disorders and suicide all tie together and are, are very important, um, and worthy of our attention. And so again, I want to just say thank you for bringing attention to this and spotlighting the importance of prevention, uh, during this time. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Robin. Um, I was just talking earlier about the Riley County Mental Health Task Force meeting and the grants you've received for the stabilization center and also the conversation that happened at the recovery task force regarding mental health. So it is definitely on the forefront of everything we're still doing and a top priority in our community. So thanks for all you're doing for our community as well.
Thank you very much.
The next, um, proclamation is Constitution Week and we have Laura Renfro from, uh, Chapter Regent, Polly Ogden Chapter, National Society Daughters of American Revolution and Nancy B. Williams, Vice Director of Northwest District, Kansas Society of the American Revolution. Uh, both will be, are present via Zoom. Oh, there you are. Via Zoom to receive the proclamation. Uh, welcome. Uh, we'll have Brenda read the proclamation and I'll give you, um, time to say a few words.
Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty marks the two hundred thirty-third anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation and to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Usher Ready, mayor of the city of Manhattan, Kansas, does hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty-third of twenty twenty as Constitution Week in Manhattan, Kansas, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven.
Thank you, Brenda. Uh, good evening, ladies. Uh, would you like to make a few comments?
Yes. On behalf of the KSDAR Chapter, Polly Ogden, we would like to thank you, mayor, for this Constitution Week proclamation. We daughters strive to make a more perfect union by focusing on education, historic preservation and patriotism in service to our wonderful city, state and country. During COVID and this difficult time, this difficult pandemic, daughters of the American Revolution have made over six hundred thousand masks and almost a hundred thousand different types of PPE for, uh, people to, uh, wear and be safe during this time. We do understand that this is a very difficult time and we hope to rise and shine for God, home and country during this, uh, this and every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, Nancy, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, good evening, mayor and, uh, city commissioners. It is my pleasure to be attending this, uh, proclamation with, uh, Regent Laura Renfro for the Polly Ogden Chapter. It's most important for the daughters to stimulate different types of activities during difficult times. And since we've been an organization since seventeen eighty, we have seen many. Uh, once again, thank you, mayor, for recognizing the Constitution of the United States that we hold, all of us hold so dear to our hearts. Uh, thank you.
Thank you both for being with us this evening. We'll move on to commissioner comments. Surtan Desen. We'll move on to Commissioner comments. Sharon Anderson?
I just didn't want us to move beyond this meeting without recognizing September eleventh and Patriot Day and the connection we have to Fort Riley and the soldiers that have fought in the longest war that our country's faced in Afghanistan. Just so many things have been going on. We're struggling with school and hybrid and keeping businesses afloat and the pandemic and all of the unrest everywhere that we kind of, it feels to a degree that we've lost a sense of what that September eleventh came to mean to so many people. I was a senior in high school when that happened, and my best, one of my best friends died in Iraq fighting that war. I think so many people have been touched in different ways from those events, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that as well. This is, this is the world we live on, we live in, and I appreciate Fort Riley and our connection and our continued service. The global war on terror continues.
Linda Morse, I would like to just call attention to some things I learned at the Social Services Agency meeting I attended earlier this week. And that is that the FIT closet for USD three eighty-three drop-off point has now changed to the new building that the district built at two oh three one Casement Road. And as you know, those, the clothing that is dropped off supports the students in USD three eighty-three at the high school and junior high. I don't know about younger people, but I imagine it does. There's a new organization in town for folks that don't have a place to go during the day, whether that's zero degrees outside, whether that's a hundred and ten. It's called BE ABLE, B-E-A-B-L-E, two words, and it is located at the old Sears Building at Fourth and Houston. And those, typically, there are people in the community that have no place to be, no place to go. And so, maybe they just completed a stint at the Riley County Jail, or maybe they're, they've just left the stabilization center, or they need a place to go. And a man named Scott Voeos is staffing it, and he's going to work with the folks that go there. Michael Wilson, who's the Mobility Manager for the Area Transportation Agency, announced that they are trying really hard to recruit new ATA bus drivers. And they will train the person and help them get their commercial driver's license, their CDL, and they're even paying a one thousand dollar sign-on bonus, and I think that's an indication of the desperation that they're feeling to get drivers. So, I just wanted to let people know about that. I did attend the conversation on race and justice last night, and it's always informative and helpful when we get to know other people in our community, and we have conversations that aren't always that comfortable. And it helps us relate better to one another, and we always meet new people. So, it was a very worthwhile event. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mark? When? Okay. I just wanted to say, the Chamber of Commerce, the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce has received two point five million dollars in Sparks Care Funds, and they will be putting out an application process, and you can apply for fifteen thousand grant, a fifteen thousand dollar grant for applicants. And I highly suggest, if you have any type of business, to contact the Chamber and see how they can help you have access to those funds. The Greater Manhattan Community Foundation also has similar funds. I think they're giving up to twenty-five thousand for nonprofits. So, if you're a nonprofit, contact Vern Hendricks from the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation just to see if you're eligible. The worst thing that will happen is somebody will say no, but the best thing that will happen is you'll get twenty-five thousand dollars for your organization. This is your taxpayer money, so I highly suggest you take some time and look through it and see if you are eligible. Once again, I'm going to urge you to take the census if you haven't already. This impacts the funds we get for our city and our state, and this is, again, your taxpayer money that somebody else might be getting if you don't fill out the form. And it also impacts the local, state, and federal elections. So, if our population changes, we may have less representation in Topeka or at the federal level. For example, we have four congressional districts right now. We may end up with three, which is what most people are anticipating. That means we have less representation for congresspeople to work for funds to come bring back to Kansas. So, it's very, very, very important that you take it. We have until September thirtieth, I believe, to do that. And also, please register to vote. I believe October fifteenth is the last day to register to vote. Every election is a very important election, but if your name has changed or you have a change of address, just go into, I think it's Kansas Votes, and just check if you are registered to vote and where you are registered to vote and the options you have for voting. With that, that's all I have for the Commissioner comments on my end. We will move on to Consent Agenda. The items on Consent Agenda are those of routine or housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the General Agenda. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on the Consent Agenda items? Yes, Commissioner Hattasol?
I have two questions. Item D is the Temporary Permit Program to allow the sale, service, and consumption of alcohol in dining areas downtown. Is this the same item that was pulled off the General Agenda two weeks ago, and now it's on the Consent Agenda?
No, it was on the Consent Agenda there also.
That night too. Okay, still got, just got pulled off, so.
It is the same item.
Okay, and so, this is just going to allow them to carry the drink out of the building across the sidewalk to?
Into the parking area where the platforms are. Yes.
Good. Second question, Rob. On item E, which is awarding the construction contract for the concrete, T and M Concrete isn't going to subcontract all that out to Pavers Inc. again, are they? Are they, you know, have any idea if they're actually going to do the work for that? Or if they were going to do like the outfit that Kimball did, where we award the contract to somebody, but then somebody else does all, ends up doing most of the concrete work?
No, T and M has done the majority, I mean, they've done other concrete panel work with their own crews, so. They're not that large of an outfit that I could see them subbing it out to another subcontractor. I can double-check, but they've done concrete panel projects in the past for us with their own crews.
Okay, all right, just wanted to check. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Any, we didn't, I don't believe we received any public comment on Consent Agenda items. On the minutes, okay. And is there any public comment from the group that's here this evening on Consent Agenda items? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda as distributed.
Second.
Okay, Brenda, please call the roll.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, moving on to the General Agenda. First consideration of an Economic Development Application for Bev Hub LLC. And our presenters this evening are Jason Hilders, our Deputy City Manager, Darren Solden, Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, Jennifer Sork, Bev Hub, did I say that right?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And Lee Eaton from Bev Hub. Jason, are you going to, oh, Darren's going to be presenting first. Welcome, Darren.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If I may, really quick, just an informational update, Mayor. Thank you for the note about the Spark Funds that are coming down through the county. Just a note on that program. We'll hope to have a public announcement on by the end of the week, and those dollars stay at the county. We'll just be providing administrative services on that, but I think it's going to be a great thing for a lot of businesses in Riley County, and we're honored to be able to help with that.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for sharing about that. So, it is my honor to be here this evening representing a great company, and so, we have the opportunity in Economic Development to work with, work with a number of folks, looking at our, at our community. Obviously, we do a lot of marketing of the community, and with the end goal of creating jobs, creating capital investment, bringing talent to the area, retaining talent in the area, developing entrepreneurial efforts, and the project I'd like to present to you tonight, we strongly feel encourages and accomplishes all of those things. Bev Hub is a one-stop shop for all co-packing needs, and so, co-packing is when they're going in and they're actually, in their case, canning beverage product for a number of companies. It's a very impressive list of the folks that they do or have the potential to work with. In this case, all non-alcoholic beverages, so waters, teas, cold brew coffees, juices, et cetera, provide a whole suite of services across that, across that spectrum. Bev Hub as a company has recently purchased the old Tallgrass Brewing Company Building out in the Manhattan Business Park. This is a second location for them. Original location in Wichita, demand has outgrown that, that location, and when looking to expand, they looked at this particular property in Manhattan and looked at the community and made the decision to come here. So, I can tell you that, especially in the current climate, things are very competitive for, for quality companies, and growth opportunities oftentimes are not every day. So, this is something that, having the opportunity to work with them and come to all of you with, with this presentation and this package is something that I think as a community, we should, we should be very aware of, and it's something that we should definitely do not take lightly. After the purchase here, obviously, they've got some building expansion plans, and we'll talk a little bit more about the capital investment piece there. Significant equipment investment in that line of work. Obviously, you've got significant equipment needs and then new job creation as well. So, I alluded to this a little bit earlier, what a great fit this is for our Economic Development Strategies at the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, and why ultimately the Manhattan Area Chamber supports this, this package that's being presented tonight. The projection is for thirty-seven jobs created over the course of the first three years, so fits the, fits the bill there when it comes to jobs. From a talent standpoint, these are jobs that many of which require specialty training due to equipment or other processes that are, that are necessary to do the work. Also, because working in the, in the food business, there are some requirements there from a safety standpoint also. There's also great opportunity here to hire local graduates, transition military members, and for potential internships with the company for our local students. So, from a talent standpoint, a very strong company to add to the Manhattan area. Looking at entrepreneurship, another one of our key pillars of, and key strategic pillars with Economic Development, this is a Kansas company. As we mentioned, the founder in Wichita, Kansas investors, and we're creating opportunity here for them to grow in Kansas. And for us, a great thing to grow in Manhattan. And finally, innovation. As with many companies, when we talk about innovation in and around Manhattan, that's a connection to Kansas State University. So, there's a connection there that's been made already, work being done with the K-State Value Added Foods Lab, and definite potential going forward to continue to build on that, build on that relationship and into the future. So, because of these things, that's the reason why the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, we're so strongly supporting this. We have Larisha, our Chamber of Commerce Board Chair, and Jason Smith, our President and CEO here this evening in support of this. And our Chamber Board of Directors voted to, to support the incentive package and this project being presented tonight. Just a little bit of detail here on the, on where exactly we're talking about. Again, this is in the center of the south section of the Manhattan Business Park. Outline in blue there is the, again, the former, or the former Brewing Company Building. The two lots identified there, twenty-seven and twenty-nine, are the lots that, as part of the incentive package, there will be an option to purchase by the company. The other components of the incentive package are the jobs grant, and again, those are performance-based, so those jobs have to be created for them to realize the benefit there, as well as a property tax abatement on the new addition to the building, which will be one of the first things we'll see getting underway on this project out there. There's going to be some additional, and I'll let them talk some more about it, but we've got some images as well. But in addition to help with shipping and receiving and warehousing there to the existing buildings. So, the property tax abatement IRBs related to that approximately nine hundred thousand dollar project. So, the three components, again, the jobs grant, thirty-seven jobs over three years, works out to about, about six thousand five hundred dollars per job. The property tax, I said about two hundred forty thousand dollars, the property tax abatement over ten years on the property tax on the new portion or the addition to the building, works out to about three hundred fifty, about thirty-five thousand dollars a year, three hundred fifty thousand dollars over ten, and then the option on the two pieces of property. So, with that, again, I just want to say that we're very supportive from the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. It's been a pleasure to work with Jennifer and Lee, who are in attendance, and we'll introduce them and bring them up here a little bit later to, to share some more about the project. But it's been a pleasure working with them and strongly supportive of this project and this package that's being presented this evening.
Thank you, Darren.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jason Hilders, Deputy City Manager, just here this evening really to run through our agreements and the relationship we anticipate with Bev Hub. As Darren pointed out, Lot twenty-eight, a former brewery building for this co-packing operation for the beverage makers. They have purchased that. Now, they are applying for Economic Development Funds to assist with their expansion and their growth here in Manhattan. Darren has went through a lot of this for you already. Thirty-seven jobs, next three years, we've landed on a sixty-five hundred per job grant. That totals two hundred forty thousand five hundred, roughly about a nine hundred thousand dollar expansion. We could anticipate, if we're agreeable, some industrial revenue bonds resolution on October sixth that would authorize that moving forward, as well as the tax abatement for that ten-year period. It's roughly about thirty-five grand a year. That's to all taxing jurisdictions. Our share of that obviously is just the forty-nine mils of that total, one hundred and fifty-six total. So, the school district and the county would obviously be impacted by that as well. Option, two lots, they're adjacent to Lot twenty-eight, so twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Again, Darren pointed those out. The options would basically just be in place for five years. When, when and if they decided to execute those, they would pay that thirteen-five an acre, which is traditionally what we have received for property in the Manhattan Business Park. Go ahead, Mark.
Commissioner Hassel here. Just refresh my memory on the industrial revenue bonds. We're not, we're not guaranteeing nothing. We're not out any money with them. We're just the facilitator so that they get a slightly better rate or a better place to market them. What is really the advantage of the IRBs?
The real advantage for IRBs traditionally is a sales tax exemption on construction. So, that nine hundred thousand will have a sales tax exemption. They'll go with it. It is the vehicle through the state by which this governing body can award an abatement. That is truly the two biggest benefactors. The financing is obviously there, but with rates today as low as they are, IRB financing is probably not a huge advantage. But those other two things are really desirable when it comes to industrial revenue bonds. But you're right, the city takes no risk. The property does go into our name. Metalarc's still in our name, portions of GTM's still in our name, because when you get into IRBs, it transfers until all that debt is paid, and then transfers back to that owner. So, from a taxing perspective, our name shows up on these properties, but it's a relationship through the duration of that debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, Linda Morse, we aren't considering the IRBs and tax abatement tonight, right?
No, we're not.
Yeah.
They're just part of the package. They are part of the agreement that we have draft in form for you tonight. Tonight is just first consideration, get the information out there. Second consideration would then look to execute those contracts and take action on those IRBs. You bet. Number of jobs created, this is the thirty-seven over the three-year period. We went ahead and showed you the average wage they anticipate for these thirty-seven. You can see the majority are right here, nineteen dollars an hour. That's roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars a year and above. Obviously, at forty, you get into the eighty thousand dollar a year jobs. So, quality jobs coming into the community. Our criteria, we adjust this annually in the Bureau of Labor Statistics. We established this back in two thousand and ten. It's grown. this back in 2010. It's grown. Uh, our minimum used to be closer to a $12 range. Now we're up over 1445, uh, and our high end obviously grows with it. So it, it just ratchets up every year by that inflation growth factor in the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Uh, they came in with an 8.9 on their score overall, about 11.9, which is really right in the range. We typically get companies anywhere, obviously, between 10 and 15. 15's the highest. Uh, a score of 11.9, uh, runs through our model very well. Wanted to highlight their, their investments. This is something that I would anticipate Jennifer and Lee would elaborate on. Their investment of, of $22 million in equipment in this facility is obviously substantial. Uh, this goes well beyond the $900,000 expansion, the $2 point million acquisition. This is some high-end equipment. Uh, they're going to be obviously producing a lot of goods for distribution. Uh, so this is just an incredible investment in our community, and wanted to highlight that here this evening. This is our cost-benefit, uh, analysis over a 20-year run. Uh, the benefits obviously come back to the city by way of sales tax and property tax. The costs are obviously the, the three, uh, the 37 jobs, almost a quarter of a million there, as well as the, the abatements and the annual, uh, run out of the abatement on the city side. So we net a, a little over a quarter of a million dollars over that 20-year period. As I mentioned, the agreement that's included in the packet, uh, highlights the incentives for the job creation and the performance, uh, based incentive package there. We have IRBs, uh, that I mentioned also with the tax abatement details. Those real estate option agreements, we've done these in the past, uh, again, just over 8.47 acres at 13.5 an acre if they decide to execute and expand. Uh, hopefully, they express that to you as well when we've met with them. The expansion is a real possibility in the marketplace, and, and we're hopeful they can take advantage of these two adjacent lots at the Business Park. I'll get Darren back up here again. He can introduce Jennifer and Lee, uh, but I'd be happy to answer any questions right now, or we can wait till they're done and dive into some of those details, Mayor.
Yeah, I just have, uh, one quick question. Um, when we talk about the tax, uh, property tax abatement, that's on the expansion portion of it.
Correct.
Not the entire part of it?
Accurate. The expansion of the 900,000 in IRBs is the only thing they're, uh, can apply for, for the actual abatement. Uh, the 2.1 million that they spent on the building, they'll continue to pay taxes on that to all jurisdictions.
So be back on the tax rolls except for the, I just want to make sure we're collecting property taxes at some level.
Yeah, and fortunately, we, we always have collected those taxes on that building. Uh, even when they went through their financial troubles and it changes hands, those taxes get paid, which is a, a real good thing. But yes, the essence they've acquired, taxes are up to date.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Well, one last question. Um, how many years do they have the option to buy that real estate? Is it 10?
I believe we're going for five. I'll have to clarify that. I think that's actually still a blank, but I believe, Jennifer, is it?
We didn't say five.
Five, yeah.
Okay, well, not tying it up terribly long then.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. So I, Commissioners and Mayor, I just want to introduce, um, our representatives from Bev Hub that we have with us tonight. So we've got Lee Eaton, Vice President, and, uh, Jennifer Sork, uh, General Counsel.
Good evening, and, uh, we're happy to be here tonight in front of you. Um, I did have to apologize right off the bat, wearing my Ichabod mask. I am an Ichabod, so I know I'm in a, at least friendly territory, but it, uh, that's what I had in my vehicle. I'm Jennifer Sork. I'm General Counsel. I have with me Lee Eaton, and, uh, we're actually from, uh, Topeka with the principals who purchased the, uh, property that used to be formerly known as Tallgrass Brewing Company. Approximately four years ago or so, back it up a little bit, um, the principals also met a individual by the name of Dan McDonald, and he had a small little coffee brew, nitrogen-infused coffee. It came in a can and, uh, wanted some additional investors. Well, one, one thing that he also knew is other folks in the same industry that needed a small little boutique, um, canning shop to also brew kind of their, their little hobbies and side projects that end up growing a little bit and are able to go to the marketplace. That's how Bev Hub starts. And so we invest in some equipment. We get canning going and moving forward, and more people hear about Bev Hub. They're interested in canning their little boutique brews. As it grows, we now have a lot of interest from national and international brands, which leads us to Manhattan, Kansas. So that's the history. Really what it is, is they don't make their own recipes. They, they contact and contract with national, international brands, and they can label, do everything they need to do back at the house and slap the, the brand together and make a self, a shelf-stable product. So based upon that interest and, um, several NDAs that have been signed moving forward with those companies, um, we've made the investment here in, in Manhattan, Kansas of approximately $25 million, um, and, and ready to start construction. So we're pretty excited to be here. And, um, as you, as you heard from, uh, Darren and Jason, they've been great to work with, um, on a project and getting some, some, uh, incentives moving forward, but we do look to actually start hiring some folks in, in the very near future. We're in the interview process and, and hope to be operational at the beginning of this year to begin canning approximately 250 cans per minute, which is over a million cans per month being shipped out of Manhattan, Kansas. In addition to not just our employees that we bring to the table, um, and hiring them and being employed in Manhattan, you'll also have a lot of, um, executives, food science folks from those brands that come to visit. They have to taste test. They have the recipe, um, coordination. Everything goes through approval process, additional certifications to make sure it's all, it's going to taste the same throughout the entire brand. So you'll have lots of visitors and other benefits, not just from the employees that work for Bev Hub. As mentioned, um, there is a, a small addition, um, to the property that will help with the receiving and, and packaging portion because the volume is so much higher than they could ever do with beer. Um, we have to do a pretty big expansion there. So that's what we're requesting as far as the property tax abatement. In addition, um, any sales tax abatement from those construction costs, that would be tied to that as well, and then the incentive, um, also tied to those jobs that we're offering. Hope, we are hopeful to go ahead and start with two shifts, but hopefully in that year three, because we're expecting to run three shifts per, per day, and that will lead to additional expansion as well on those two parcels of property. And that's what we're, we're seeing. That's kind of our experience thus far with our Wichita site, which is significantly smaller. Um, and this will help us, uh, give opportunities to the state of Kansas and Manhattan on working with some major and national brands and getting it out to consumers. So, any additional questions?
Uh, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, and you have, you have one in Wichita, is that what you said?
That's, that's correct. It's cur, it's a leased space and it's smaller, and we'll go ahead and continue operating it, um, for those smaller, um, uh, folks who, who don't have nearly as big a shipments. Uh, really, the intent of the property here in Manhattan is to run national brands and be able to provide them as a, a regional distribution for them.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Any questions for Jennifer?
I think, uh, I'm not sure who to direct it to, but, uh, I saw on one of the slides, uh, anticipated, you know, creation of jobs around 36, um, and with kind of a wage floor there around $16 or higher. Is that, is that fair to say? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, uh, the average wage we anticipate will probably be about $22 an hour between all of the, the folks at the initial startup and, um, in addition to a, a full benefit package. So, um, currently, um, we are working with getting full operational staff, um, including some of those production higher-end wages, um, and, and jobs, and then we're also working, um, you know, maintenance staff as some other regular production folks. So, uh, we're optimistic that, um, January, February of next year, we'll be fully operational in those, at least one initial shift, if not two shifts later on.
And, uh, default, for, for those employees, you'll be, I mean, looking obviously locally, uh?
Yes, absolutely. Um, there are, uh, I think some, uh, that are, are familiar with the, the Tallgrass Brewing Company that are interested in being employed in Manhattan, Kansas. Um, in addition to that, uh, we've been, already, our folks are working with the Food Science Department, K-State, and I believe they already have an intern that they're working with, and they've been working closely, um, as a, as a partnership. So I would anticipate some, some graduates would get great opportunities.
Um, and maybe the Kent, the gentleman behind you can get you a K-State mask.
Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Is Lee going to be speaking this evening as well? Lee Eaton?
Hopefully not.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present on this project. I failed to forward the slide, but this is a, a, a rendering of that work to be done, uh, the additional, uh, to the building here that we're talking about, when we talk about the $900,000 component of the project, so.
Yeah, sounds great.
Happy to stand for any questions from the, on the chamber.
Thank you, Darren. Uh, questions for Darren, Jason, um, Jennifer, or Lee? No questions. Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, so in our packet, there was a reference to Baker Tilly coming back with us with a, um, review for second consideration based on risk assessment. Can you speak to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, Baker Tilly is the city's financial advisor on every economic development applicant. We typically, uh, introduce the company to Baker Tilly. They share, uh, information with our financial advisor. They conduct an analysis and basically come back with a statement whether or not they believe they can fulfill their obligations under the terms of our contract. We anticipate that within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, by October. And, uh, the, there said 35, 37 jobs, and, uh, I'm glad Commissioner Astor Brook asked about the floor, uh, for the starting salary because there were three different references. At some points, it had $13, some point it had $16, and then there was just, so I'm thinking in the application process, it said 16, and, um, that that's what we are considering. Is that right?
Yeah, 16 is that, that bottom wage, uh, and it's, it's an average. Um, the 1445 is the average by which we put it through the scoring system, so they were above that minimum.
Okay, and since we're not voting on that tonight, just considering everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is a great organization. I'm glad, uh, you sought out Manhattan and worked with Kansas State University, our chamber and our city staff. Um, people always ask about incentive packets that we give to businesses from economic development funds, and one of the clear indicators is when people look to Manhattan, uh, every community is looking for, uh, to make something appeasing because when they come and they build, uh, in Manhattan and hire our folks to work, uh, in their organization, that means we have people buying houses, uh, people staying in our community, people spending money, uh, and that's exactly what we want. And this is, um, and it, uh, it seems like an up-and-coming business and, uh, regional, national, and international, so hopefully, um, it's successful.
Uh, Linda Morse, I, uh, this seems like a perfect fit for us, and we haven't had the public hearing, I guess. I'll wait.
Public comment?
The only comment I would make is, in addition, this is really our first application to work with both Darren and Jason at the chamber. Uh, I appreciated Jason's comments and his daily newsletter that he sends out, um, complimenting the process and the, the differences in just the application and the model. It's comprehensive, but, uh, just kudos to both of them. Picked it up very quickly and, and obviously kept, uh, Bev Hub fully engaged, and we're here this evening, uh, due to a large in part to the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Um, is there any public comment on this, uh, general agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it back to Commissioner comments and, uh, take a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I, I would just like to say that it's been a year or two since we had, uh, such a well-developed proposal. I'm glad we have the process we have and the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to vet the, uh, applications and, um, assure, because we are interested in that minimum wage, that wage, not floor not being too low. We want it to be as best we can for people in our community. Uh, and we want that kind of investment. We're a natural location for, um, transportation, uh, north and south and east and west, so it's a good, uh, fit for us, and we would welcome, uh, this new business. So, um, are there other comments?
Yeah, I just also wanted to say, you know, um, people always say we need higher wages and they, and salaries, and I think this is hopefully with the, uh, with NBA, North Campus Corridor, all of these things that we are discussing, I hope that, uh, elevates the salary portion even higher, because that's what we're looking for. Uh, I think the pandemic has shown who the essential workers are, and the essential workers are, happen to be the hourly workers. And oftentimes, they're the ones who may or may not have health care, and we see, uh, how all of those parameters impact our community. So we want it to be a good organization, uh, taking care of our community members and our employees, and I look forward to further discussions. Uh, is there a motion?
It fits also with our need for manufacturing here. I think this is manufacturing, uh, here in our community. Uh, if you're just putting things together, I'm not sure anyway. Uh, but, you know, we are, have, we have so many, uh, different governments here with the university and the federal and even our local, uh, and so having, uh, we need to build on the manufacturing side. And so this would be a welcome, uh, addition to our community. And having, uh, favorably, I would say, reviewed, uh, this, I, I wanted to ask the city manager, this is an unusual motion for us, uh, and to authorize the second consideration of this application. So would we not approve the first reading tonight and of, and, and so that the second reading would come back on October 6th?
So it's, uh, our, our typical language for an economic development application, that it's not really a reading, it's just a, you know, our, our policy says we have to have two considerations of an application.
So it's a consideration, okay.
So.
Okay. It's been a while.
Yep.
Well, okay, then I move that we...
Can I make a comment first before making a motion?
Oh, sure.
Just to, just to clarify, okay, this, this proposal has three parts to it. The first is 240,000, 240,000, $500 in economic development funds, and we've got plenty of those in account. We haven't spent hardly any of that, so I think that's a good thing. Then, then second is the industrial revenue bonds, which really don't put the city at any risk, you know, whatsoever. We've, we've done those before. And the third is the tax abatement, but only on the expansion that's being built there, so that we're not taking any step backwards in property tax collections, which is what we did with the Civics Plus project many years ago. So this has got three very good elements in it, and as was mentioned, the lowest paid job here is $16, which is way above, uh, I think, the living wage number that a lot of people like to throw out there, which is 14. So, so this has got, uh, you know, three big pluses for it, and I'm 100% in favor on it.
Plus the product, okay. Uh, with that, I will move that we authorize the second consideration of the Bev Hub application for October the 6th.
Second item.
Thank you. Uh, Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Astor Brook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
The second general agenda item is to consider a city-state agreement with Kansas State Depart, I'm sorry, Kansas Department of Transportation, KDOT, for a, uh, cost-share grant in the amount of, uh, $2.9 million for a portion of Kimball Avenue reconstruction as part of the North Campus Corridor Phase 9, ST 1908, along with an agreement with the, with Evergy for the relocation of its overhead electrical distribution system and a construction contract with Larson Construction for the installation of underground infrastructure to facilitate Evergy's electrical distribution components, as well as Resolution Number 091520-B, amending payment of improvement costs. And Brian Johnson, our city engineer, will be presenting this evening. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Sorry about that long-winded motion there. You're going to have another one. I apologize for that. Uh, seems to be the night for them. Uh, so again, uh, accept a cost-share agreement from Kansas State University, and good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Brian Johnson, City Engineer. Tonight's item is actually threefold. The first item that you just spoke about is to accept a $2.9 million grant from KDOT for the North Campus Corridor. for the North Campus Corridor Phase Nine project. The second and third items are related to infrastructure for the grant acceptance. It's for the Evergy overhead power lines. These items are for the overhead power that Evergy can put underground, and it's also for a construction contract to install that infrastructure that they're going to go into. We're actually going to tag-team this a little bit tonight. I'm going to kick it off, and I get to talk about geometrics, accidents, safety, new intersections, all the things that I love to talk about. And then I'm going to turn the mic over to Jason Hilgers, Deputy Senior Manager. He's going to update you on some financing stuff. So with that, tonight's cost share. So first, this first slide here, there's actually quite a bit going on here, and I want to talk about this for a minute. We actually are listing four phases, Phase Six, Nine, Ten, and Eleven, on this one slide alone. Now, on this slide, there's about $7.3 to $7.4 million of KDOT grant money just in this slide, so it's pretty substantial. Phase Six is actually what's under construction, and it's over here at College and Kimball. Phase Nine is what we're talking about now, tonight. This is where the $2.9 million KDOT cost share grant came into play. Phase Eleven is the intersection of Dennison and Kimball, which is related to the NBA project, you can see here on the bottom of the screen. And then Phase Ten is the piece of the curves on Kimball between Dennison and North Manhattan. This, actually, we have a $4.2 million KDOT grant on, and the estimate on this project is about $4.2 million. So this is about 100% grant. Again, in total on this slide, over $7 million of KDOT grant money. So the agenda for tonight, we're going to review the completed phases to date. Again, we're talking about Phase Nine of a 13-phase project, so we're over three-quarters of the way to get to the finish line on this project. We're going to review the current phases that are under construction, Phase Six and Seven. We're going to talk about the Phase Nine design because there is some complexity to that. We're trying to reduce some accidents along that corridor. It's a pretty high accident corridor, and we're going to talk about some strategies that we have to reduce those accidents. And then we're going to talk about the Evergy agreement, how to get those overhead power lines underground. So back to the campus sequencing plan, and as you can see, this is actually a 2017 slide, so it's been around a while. Got a lot of mileage out of this one. Phases One, Two, Three, and Four, these four phases are actually a cost share with Riley County. And back to your comment just a minute ago, Commissioner Morris, about transportation and being regional, this is a perfect example of that. This was a 60-40 cost split between the city of Manhattan and Riley County, Riley County picking up 60%. And we widened Marlat, made a bigger box here. This box was actually rated as a 10-year event, and it had zero recovery zone. There's actually a fatal crash right here about a year before construction. So we widened the box. We also widened it out far enough, we can get a trail across it in the future. So in the future, when we want to connect this trail system to this trail system, there's no stormwater work to be done. It's all paving. Phase Two, Three, and Four was Dennison, and that was widened from the existing two-lane black asphalt, open ditch, to three lanes with lighting and a trail on the west side. Trail also goes down Marlat, makes a connection over here to Northview. And if you recall, you approved a Kirkwood project that runs up through, right through this area. Now that will now link the Marlat Trail down Kirkwood and into the Northview area. So we've connected this junior high now back to the main campus area. So again, Projects One through Five are completed, Six and Seven, Six, Seven, under construction. Project Eight, which is a landscaping project down North Manhattan, is scheduled 2021, 2022. Actually, by waiting, we're going to save quite a bit of money. Evergy is going to reduce the voltage along North Manhattan. They're going to go from those big giant overhead structures down to smaller structures you'd see like on Dennison and College. When they reduce those, we can partner with them then and get that underground instead of putting up new poles. So by waiting, we're going to save a pretty substantial amount of money, and we're in monthly conversations with Westar about that, so, or Evergy now, with Evergy about that. We're looking at a 2021, 2022 project. It's worth the wait because it's a substantial savings. Project Nine, which is what we're talking about tonight, has that $2.9 million grant funding. Project Ten, which flattens these curves out, expands the curves, takes the bridge down, widens the lanes, all the things that you think about when you drive those corners and you wonder why they're so skinny and narrow and why you're going so fast, we're going to address all of that in Phase Ten. So between all of these and between the 2017 start of the discussion, with the phases that we've completed already, there's $56 million of new buildings in the North Campus Corridor. That's a substantial amount of money. In 2014, when Kansas State Administration was here talking to us about their 2025 vision, they talked about returns on investment. $56 million in new buildings. That's probably a five or six to one return on that investment. So what have we completed so far on the North Campus Corridor projects? Phase One through Four is completed, again, Riley County partnership, 60-40 split, Project Widen Marlat to four lanes and Dennison to three lanes, Project Increased Stormwater Capacity on Marlat. If you remember, Marlat was closed in a two or three-in train. Riley County would have to go out, and they would have to close Marlat at that crossing there. That happened once or twice a year. It was not uncommon. So we increased it to a 50-year storm event, and then we also included additional box length, so we can get a trail across there at some point in the future. Project also included nearly 7,000 feet of new 10-foot trail that links the Marlat-Northview area to the Kimball KSU Trail System. Again, once you get to Dennison and Kimball on a trail system, you can go anywhere you want. You can go through campus, you can go west, you can go south, you can go east. That's really the linchpin of that whole trail system. Project, or Phase Five, which is the North Manhattan from Research Park to Baker's Way, that was completed last year, and we're actually in Project Seven now this year. That project included relocating of Baker's Way. Actually moved Baker's Way north farther, so we were up on top of the hill, and we increased our site distance at Baker's Way with anticipation of more businesses coming in there, and we actually passed some petitions, I'm sorry, the petition passed, or the commission passed some petitions about six months ago for the west side, the Research Park extension. That project's going to get under construction probably within the next 60 to 90 days. So what does Dennison look like? Well, remember, at one time, it was two lanes, and it had open ditches, no curb and gutter. It's a three-lane section now. It also has a trail on the west side, got some recovery zone and some open areas to capture that stormwater and convey it. The Marlat Avenue area, now that's a four-lane section. Remember, that was two lanes, open ditch, got storm sewer. It's also got the trail on the north side. All of these are lit as well, so at night, you've got plenty of lighting along that trail system. And that extension of that trail system, that's this area here in green. And again, that now connects into this Northview area. You can see in this area here, Northview area, you're either going south, or there really used to be no way to get north. And so with this extension, this 7,000 lineal foot extension, which is a mile and a third, by the way, you can actually cross TCB, get over to Dennison, get down to Kimball, connect to all of the trail systems that then runs throughout the city. With this Phase Six project, the trail actually now extends to Hillside. USD 383 partnered with us to extend that trail past Sunnymead all the way to Hillside, so now College Hill School will have a 10-foot trail in front of it. So those people that want to get to school, and we try to encourage people to walk to school as much as we can, we've got a 10-foot trail now to College Hill School. So what have we completed now? Now, this is Phase Five, and this goes from Research Park down to Baker's Way, and the project that's under construction now, I'll talk about in just a minute, starts about here. Again, relocated Baker's Way. Remember, Baker's Way used to be down here, and the parking lot was on the opposite side, so all their employees had to walk across Baker's Way to get to their offices. And then this connection here, it used to be down here. It wasn't on the top of the hill, there was poor site distance. Moved it up to Baker's Way. And then this Research Park extension actually runs over here to Cul-de-sac, and then this comes down, tees up. Petitions are approved for this. We're in final design. Hope to bid that within the next 60 to 90 days. I'm sure you've heard that there's a large company that's looking at these lots and actually has purchased these lots. Phase Six, which is currently under construction, is the Kimball-Collage intersection. Hopefully, you've been out there and seen a little bit of the work that's been done on College, especially going down south to the soccer and to the baseball stadiums, going north also. That trail now extends all the way, actually off the page, over here to College Hill Elementary. So that 10-foot trail gets over to the elementary. Then it runs along the north side. End of the phase is about right in here, and then from there on is this Phase Nine. This project actually includes ped trails north side, two new Hawk signals. Used to be a pedestrian crossing RFBE located here, and then one also down by the baseball stadium. We've taken those out. We've gone to the much more safer Hawk system that we used out on West Anderson. So if you haven't seen those, they're pretty effective, they're pretty efficient. Got some center medium, medians to eliminate the left turn lanes. We're going to talk about accidents in a second, but all of the accidents in this corridor occurred at the driveways. All of them did, all 23. So as we were looking at this project, we knew we had to eliminate those driveways. We'll talk about how we got there in just a second. There's a bus stop at Toynton Stadium down here at the baseball stadium, and then we also relocated all of the overhead along College and Kimball last year. So what's under construction on this side now? Phase Seven along North Manhattan. This area is under construction from just north of McCain down to Claflin. It's actually open now, one-way each direction. Signalization is working. They're working on the trail on the west side now. This project probably be completed in the next 30 to 45 days. We eliminated some open ditch stormwater. Kansas State University told us they had some flooding issues down here in the corner because this open ditch would overflow and then come and cut across this property here. Got some street lighting and some ped lighting here on the west side, so that trail now at night is going to be lit. It's going to look a lot like a city park where when you walk down it, you've got plenty of lighting, you feel safe and secure as you walk it. We also developed a left turn lane into Lot B2. If you recall, that two-lane section would back up quite a bit at 5:00 and at 8:00 because people were trying to turn left across North Manhattan, they couldn't get a gap, and several times, they would back up into Claflin, they'd go that far south. So we developed a northbound left turn lane just to get into B2, and then the Lot B2, the exit, is actually three lanes now, it used to be two. We developed a left turn lane out of the lot and a right turn lane out of the lot. Try to separate that traffic at 5:00, so if you're going right, you can go, if you're going left, you can go. So Phase Nine, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, this phase runs from just about Gate Five all the way over to about Gate Seven. At Gate Seven, we got a new intersection, going to put a signal there. How do we get folks on this trail across to the south side or from the south to the north side? There's a lot of classroom space going on up here, they've got a lot of classrooms going on up here. People park here, and they get here, and then they got to run across four lanes of Kimball, and it's not real safe. So we're going to develop an intersection here, and then as part of that intersection, we're actually going to develop a frontage road, and I got another slide on that we can talk about in just a minute. But we're going to develop intersection here for closing driveways, closing driveways, intersections, closing driveways, closing driveways. We're going to eliminate that left turn so that we don't have that accident history. Accident history now is rear ends and T-bones, which happen when people try to turn out of lanes that are 45 miles an hour. So here's our accident slide. Again, 23 crashes in five years, pretty high number for a through lane, 17 rear end crashes. So that car in front of you is driving along, suddenly they decide they want to turn left into a driveway, you're going 45 miles an hour, it doesn't end well. Two angle crashes, these are real high-impact, high-angle crashes. These are the kind of crashes that people go to the hospital on, and out of those two, we did have one injury accident, somebody went to the hospital. Again, the vast majority of accidents are left turning off of Kimball. So how do we address that? Well, the multiple driveway entrances, they're a major contributor to that high accident count. Almost all of the accidents are at the driveway locations. And just as a refresher, 214 crashes in that entire corridor. That's a huge number. Quite a few at this intersection, we're addressing some of that, quite a few at this intersection, but there's 214 crashes along that corridor. That's a really high number. Three fatalities, 65 injuries. So how do we reduce accidents? We eliminate driveways and we build raised medians. Now, very similar to Blumott Avenue a couple of years ago when we built the median down Blumott, all of a sudden, our accident counts go way down. People aren't sitting in that through lane trying to turn. They either get a developed left turn lane, or they just can't turn left at all. They have to go down to the intersection. So let's talk about these driveways. So when we close these driveways, how do we access this area? Well, the easiest way to access is with a reverse frontage road. That's what this has shown, 24-foot wide, so it's very thin, very skinny, not a three-lane road section, but there's not enough traffic there to warrant a three-lane section. In total, we're eliminating six driveways. That's a big number. That's a lot of driveways we're eliminating. We're adding a signal down here at Gate Seven so that if you're here, you can come over, come down and catch your light and go. Or if you're here, you can go this way, come down, catch your light and go. 24-foot wide frontage road, and I need to, actually, I did update this slide a little bit. After a walk and talk with Kansas State Ag this week, there's a bundle of bir oak and pin oaks here, and they've asked us if we can move those or if we can save those. So I'm actually going to slide this roadway just to touch south, and we're going to pick up just the corner of this building. So this building here, which is about an 800-square-foot shed, is going to also get relocated on top of this building. In discussions with Agronomy and with K-State Ag, they're looking to put that building up in this location or up in this location, and we've had some initial conversations about that. We're working towards an MOU that would define how we're going to relocate those and which project is going to do that. We'll be back before you again to talk more about those details, but Agronomy doesn't like these buildings here, and they, they're more than happy to get them to move, and they're in our way, so we need to move them. So Phase Nine, the Kimball Avenue portion, again, intersection, driveway elimination, driveway elimination, driveway elimination, driveway elimination, trail along the north side, again, trying to get to that goal to get us to Dennison and Kimball, because once I get there, I can go anywhere. I can get to Northview, I can go to the west side of town, I can get to Aggieville, I can get to downtown. New signal at this location, new intersection, and then again, another new bus stop. So again, multimodal transportation, bus stop right here, you can see the pull-off, so folks can park their cars, get on their bus, go down through campus. Evergy relocation. So as we develop this roadway section, remember, now we've got a median in here, so we need to widen these curbs out. As these curbs come out, these poles get in the way. So from a strictly safety perspective, it's imperative that this infrastructure goes underground because we're going to get too close to it with 45 mile an hour vehicles. Trails get too close to it, roadways get too close to it, vehicles get too close to it. That's what this agreement is tonight, is with Evergy to relocate these. There's a construction contract to bury all that infrastructure, and then Evergy will come in and they'll put all the new wires in, put everything underground, and then there'll just be boxes like this. That's what that Evergy agreement is tonight. So let's talk a little bit about the cost share grant because this is a new grant form from KDOT, a new grant funding opportunity from KDOT. There's no Davis Bacon wages, there's no federal requirements, there's no state requirements. This is an infusion of cash into our bank account. KDOT doesn't do that, they just started that last year. So this cost share grant's $2.9 million cost share grant from KDOT. There's no federal state wages, there's no Davis Bacon. I think you probably all read in the paper about all the Davis Bacon issues we're having. We've canceled projects, Pot County has had issues with projects, Junction City's had issues with projects. There's no Davis Bacon, no state wage rates. There's also no state or federal design requirements. We can design it how we think it's best. The project is designed, bid, and manage locally. I don't have to hire a KDOT inspector, I don't have to hire a KDOT designer. I can save those dollars. That's 10 to 20%. During construction, our staff can inspect it and manage it. That's another 10 or 15% in design and CE services. And as we write checks to those contractors as they're completing projects, we can capture those dollars directly back from KDOT immediately. So that balance, we don't start drawing interest on it because we don't draw that balance down. Jason's got a lot more information on that, how we can buy down some of that principal, save us some financing and some interest costs. So with that, I'll stand for questions on the geometrics or the engineering and turn it over to Jason then so he can talk about financing.
Thanks, Matt, Brian. Questions for Brian?
Yeah, I have one, Commissioner Hassel here. So on the north side of Kimball, there's already some stretches where there's, where there's bricks, there's small sections of bricks. Is that, what's the purpose of that? Is that going to be on the north side of the sidewalk, or what do you think that's...
Sure, and actually, we've got Confluence here that can talk about that a little bit. What you're seeing is still some construction for that Phase Six. And those are those low limestone retaining walls or limestone decorative walls that you're seeing. There's gaps in them so that you can get in between them and through them. One of the things that we talked about several years ago was reducing that north side, not having it quite as intense on the landscaping side. And so we created those gaps in that fence.
But it's going to be limestone walls, not unlike what's around K-State?
Yeah. It's going to be limestone walls with some caps. Again, if Confluence, PJ, if you want to, or Hank, if you want to chat for just a second about that, if you certainly can.
Sure. What you see currently going on along College is the limestone walls are consistent all the way through. So they're unbroken. What you'll see along Kimball on the north side is there's a 40 foot stretch with a 60 foot gap in between. And there's some landscaping in between there. So what we're talking about right now, the first phase of what you're seeing there is happening along the north end of, of Kimball in this location. That will continue all the way down to the Denison Avenue intersection on that part. Brian's already shown you the phasing, but these are just some views of what you would see there along Kimball. This is actually looking at the south side. This is a view of what that transit drop off would be out in front of the stadium. Just another view. And we are lining both sides of the street with trees. And you can see here, it's kind of hard to see that, but there's actually breaks in that wall. And it will end up with a, four limestone monument signs at the intersection of College or at Kimball and Denison. And at each of the entry gateways into the athletics facilities, there will be these entry monuments. And then there will be some facility signage occurring sporadically along the corridor. Any other questions?
With the utilities going under, where?
Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Whereabouts are the utilities expected to be put underground?
They're going to be along the south side, just outside of that existing trail system. So they're going to set right, they're going to set right in here. And actually, if you go out there today, you'll see some of these green boxes. They're going to parallel or follow those green boxes all the way down. And then that retain, or that new limestone wall sits just on the inside of those boxes.
So this is a kind of a out of the box question.
Okay.
But is it possible while that is going through that transformation that there's, you know, an opportunity there in that parking lot area to have some partnership with EverG for, you know, some charging stations for electric cars or?
It's something we can certainly talk to EverG about. I don't want to speak for Kansas State University because it's their property. But, you know, it's something we can certainly talk to EverG about. I think Kansas State University administration's here. They can certainly talk about that. I don't want to speak for their property.
It's just, you know, I should have, I should have come to you sooner about that. I just kind of came up while you were going through this and was thinking there's been a, some requests and there's some shortage of those stations around. And how easy would it be to park your car to charge and hop on the bus and go over to campus?
What I don't know is the voltage in those wires. If you could make that work for a car. Those are probably 30, 40,000 volt wires. So we'd have to talk to EverG about, you know, the electronics and how it works. And then Kansas State University have to weigh in whether or not they want those in their parking lots. But it's actually a great idea. Any other questions?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll use some of Brian's mapping to walk through this. So we are obviously into several phases of construction, as Brian mentioned. Nine and 10 are really what we're here to talk about tonight. 10, as he highlighted over here, we have that $4.2 million grant. Before we go any further, I really want to send a shout out to Jared Wossinger, Brian Johnson, and their efforts to get these grants. Jared has worked on all our build applications. He and Brian were able to piece this together and leverage the 2.98 million that you're considering this evening. So kudos to those guys for all the work they put into this. And as Brian has stated clearly with the safety and the crashes, the state was interested in this corridor as well. We continue to go after grants. We have an active build grant application. I'm assuming if we don't get it this year, we're going right back again for phase 11 moving forward. But wanted to highlight that before we get too far into the numbers. So 10 has a total budget of $5 million. We have the $4.2 million in grant funds. We do expect a few more expenses there that are not going to be grant eligible. So we will have to cover those. So when you think about phase 10, think about $5 million. When you think about phase nine, think about $10 million. And that includes the overhead bury and all the project costs that were outlined here. So 10 is our max cost that we anticipate on nine. Five is the max cost we anticipate on 10. So that's a $15 million total. We have $7 million worth of grants. That $7 million, I can't stress enough and highlight again where Brian touched on, that is without state and fed strings when it comes to wages. That $7 million that we don't have to debt finance. That truly turns into almost $11 million when it comes to costs associated with North Campus corridor. And when we were pursuing star bonds, we knew we would probably only leverage between 10 and 15 in actual capital cost. These two grants are almost the equivalent of that star bond. If we would have had to build an additional museum and pledge money towards infrastructure, I would contend this $7 million is actually more beneficial than star bonds. The debate was always going to be about the museum. What were we going to build? How was it going to leverage? We would have had to have bonded that 25 million. And it would have reduced just right there down to a principle of about 17. Then we have to go build a museum of any type of nature between five and seven million. We're already down to 10 million just for infrastructure. So again, this 7 million is extremely advantageous to the city of Manhattan. So we'll take the 7 million and we'll reduce that 15 million basically down to eight. In the first four years, we'll come up with cash from water and storm. That'll apply towards this. We'll show you a scenario with a portion of the half million in City University funds that would, that could accumulate in the first four years and help buy down that debt. And then there's the scenario, obviously, we got to wait till the November vote, where that potential renewal could actually help with the debt financing on this project. When we bid these out this fall and bring you all back contracts in January, February timeline, we will show you each of these costs per year, much like we did at College and Kimball for that 14 year period. We're, we're going to recommend we accumulate as much as we can in that four year temp note period to buy down that debt. The scenario we're looking at right now gets it down to $5 million of issued debt. Then we debt finance that for 10. So we get $15 million worth of project. We believe we can accumulate cash and grants to get that down to actually 5 million that will actually issue in bonds, debt service for 10 years. The majority of then what's left will be either a sales tax or we'll have to get into the bond and interest fund to help support that debt. Roughly going to be around a mil, about 600, 700,000 in annual payments for that 10 year period. 125,000 is what we're targeting right now in City University. It won't kick in this year. The first year we would ever look for that money to even help buy down debt would be 21. 500,000 is what we've agreed to. Obviously revenues are down this year and we know that. College and Kimball had $250,000 dedicated towards its buy down for 2020. And we anticipate being able to capture that and set that aside. 125,000 in addition for 21, that leaves us about 375. That leaves us another 125,000 a year to pledge towards hopefully project 11 when we get there. Project 11 is, is really that linchpin project that'll bring everything together once we're done with nine and 10. But again, bidding those out this fall, when those contracts come back before you, we'll show you both project with that 14 year revenue approach. Be happy to answer any questions I can this evening.
Thanks, Jason. Questions for Jason? Yes, Linda?
Tell me again, how much the total for the North Campus corridor, the edge? I think it's, it's, it's changed. Inflation, whatever.
Sure. We're, we're still around 40, 42 million overall for everything. And big round numbers, six, College and Kimball's 10 million. While we're talking about tonight's 15 million. So there's your 25 million. Project 11 is going to be real close to another 7 to 8 million dollars. North Manhattan, we've already spent six. So that, that really, it's real close to getting us to that, that 40, 42 million dollar figure.
Thank you.
You bet.
I know when I was first elected in 2016, the commission and the city had already committed to this. And so I felt like it's something that we have to follow up on and continue to. And it's been a, you know, a really good project with K-State. In ways, I think we carry the heavier load. But it's, we're the community surrounding the campus. And we have a, so it's up to us to create the best community we can for the campus too. So this is, it'll be a great addition to the community when we're able to complete it. And when would we complete it? What's our target date?
As Brian was highlighting, nine and 10 would be construction year, really 21. 11 would be construction year 22. Really 23, MBAF is fully open. We really want to get intersection 11 done. So when they open, we're, we're right there with them with the infrastructure. Kent reminded me today, we started talking about this in 2012. It, it doesn't seem like it's eight years ago. But Kent and Rebecca and a number of other K-State admin were part of that team at the time. Obviously Jeremy and Linda have joined us now. And we continued those conversations with, about this infrastructure and how we can enhance this area and make it a major economic engine for the, for the community. MBAF, obviously, but the foundation's investments, Kansas State University's investments, athletics investments. It's a corridor seeing a lot of activity right now.
And in 2012, the, all of the new development, new structures north of Kimball were just, hadn't even, really weren't mature yet to be thinking about them. And so there's more to come, I'm sure.
Denison and Kimball was still a four way stop.
Okay. Helps put things in perspective to just reach back a few years, doesn't it?
And other questions for Jason? We haven't talked about the EverG portion of the underground piece of the electrical wiring. I think you, you spoke well to the amount of funding we did receive from KDOT. I think when we first were discussing it, I was here in 2013 and all, it was quite daunting. And the price tag just kept going up and up. And it was good to have City University funds dedicated to this for 20 years. Athletics dedicated some of the resources. And the big picture is as that area builds out, that we get more businesses to come into our community. And that was always a high traffic area. So that, that area was already on our radar to do something. But the partnership definitely helps and leverages it even more for the animal health corridor. I, so you talked about the, we talked about City University funds, the build grant. So the first time we didn't get the build grant. So we're hoping to hear back in October or the fall. What are our chances? What does that look like?
Jared pointed out to me earlier last week or this week that Wichita received a build grant this year. So the announcement just came out. Pretty substantial project. There's only so much money to go around. The likelihood of another Kansas community getting one this year, probably not great with that big project. Within the 21 million, and there's only 280 total in the country. Are we, is it 210? Total bill?
There's 900.
900 million. So we, and Jared pointed out, we usually get two. In the last three years, we've had two. So we, we still might be in the running this year, Mayor. But it's, it's, obviously, they've announced a big one, 21 million in Wichita.
I think that's what kind of bothers me is when people at the federal level look at communities, they consider communities that are of high population. And in this case, 500,000 or more. 50,000 doesn't fall anywhere on their radar. And even when we, during this whole pandemic, the five communities kept getting all the money. Cedric County, Johnson County, Douglas County, Shawnee. I'm missing somebody. It was Douglas, Johnson, Cedric, Shawnee and Wyandotte, Wyandotte. And Manhattan doesn't ever hit anybody's radar because we are 50. And we think that's a pretty big deal with the University, Fort Riley and everything else. But unfortunately, that's who we're competing against. And sometimes they, I think the public also needs to understand, that's our competition. That, that's, that's why we work so hard at things like the North Campus corridor and our partnerships. So 7.9 million is not a whole lot for Wichita, but it's a whole lot of money for us. And I think, thank you for working on that grant, Jared. And I hope we continue to put pressure on, on our senators and our legislators to move forward on some of these grants that are not a big deal to other communities but are a pretty big deal to, to Manhattan, Kansas. I think we're still going to have a lot of work to do, but I like what I'm seeing. I think even for the football game, it seemed like the community, people that were coming in, navigated all that construction pretty easily. And at the end of the day, it's also about safety. And pointing out how many accidents happen at some of those intersections is very important. We had roundabouts. We may go towards roundabouts again. But this expands that traffic area more. As you said, 24,000 cars a day or something like that. So, well, I appreciate the presentation this evening. Are we going to talk about EverG? I don't know who's presenting on that.
It, it's part of that 10 million. So it's about $700,000 for EverG's portion to go underground. About another $700,000 for Larson. That is part of your motion this evening. Go ahead and authorize those so we can get those started. As Brian mentioned, they need about five, six months clear of construction starting. So we'd like to get that started today. Based on past experience, we won't receive those bills probably until they're done. So more around February, February and March. And that'll be about the same time we're coming with the financing resolutions and the bonds or our temporary notes that would kick in next spring with the overall project. So we don't necessarily need any action on financing this evening. But if we can get those contracts awarded, we'll start with that work and then come back with bidding, as Brian mentioned, in November and December. Looking to award those. We'll know the outcome of the, the sales tax question at that point too, which will help make some decisions. And then look for construction to start in March or April. The state's really excited. They've asked us for some ribbon cutting and some ceremony on the site. Again, 7 million of the 15 coming from the state. Want to recognize their efforts, K-State's efforts and the, and the City Commission's efforts as well.
Yeah. One of the pieces in the agree, the line relocation agreement, number five, it says this agreement does not include the relocation of street lighting. What exactly does that mean?
So Westar does the street lighting or EverG does the street lighting in Manhattan. We have a whole new street lighting component within this corridor, much like you'll start to see on North Manhattan, College. It'll extend down Kimball as well. So we won't have them relocate. They'll actually be installing new. And those will be Westar poles with Westar lights. It'll be maintained by West, or EverG, I keep saying Westar, sorry.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Is there a public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Ready and Commissioners Butler, Hattasol.
Good evening, Mayor Ready and Commissioners Butler, Hattasol, Morris, and Erin Estebrik. Pleased to see you tonight. I'm Linda Cook, Chief of Staff and Director of Community Relations for the university. And on behalf of our university leadership, I'd like to ask for your support tonight in executing this agreement with EverG to relocate the overhead electrical lines, as well as the agreement with Larson Construction for the installation of the underground infrastructure and the city-state agreement with KDOT for that cost share program coming to $2.9 million in the grant. As as Brian outlined, the improvements outlined in this request will address some serious traffic and pedestrian safety concerns along Kimball Avenue. And as we continue to develop this area, we will see increased activity. And that's an even greater reason for making these safety improvements at this time as we continue to develop this this district, which we now do call Edge Collaboration District. So you're going to hear those names back and forth. North Campus Corridor, and more recently, is the Edge Collaboration District because of the potential that we have there for collaborating with industry, businesses, government, and doing the research. So that's why we're moving that in that direction of the Edge Collaboration District, to help us to attract more businesses to the area. It was over six years ago when a team, including the city administrators, the chamber, the university, the KSU Foundation, and K-State Athletics got together to develop this North Campus Corridor conceptual master plan. Each year, we have seen progress in this development, which by 2035 is projected to house over 5,000 jobs. More than a dozen industries are located there today, along with six different academic departments that we have from Kansas State University. Currently, more than 1,000 jobs exist in this area, and that's included in the K-State Research Park, which has numerous tenants, including the Innovation Center, Vet Med Diagnostics Lab, Kansas Department of Agriculture moved here. And more recently, we announced the Stormont Vale project. It's an academic partnership with Stormont Vale with our Physicians Assistance Program, which will start next spring, or in 2021. And also, they will be bringing a medical campus into the Research Park area. It also includes the K-State Office Park, which was not there before, which now houses the foundation. And within those different buildings, we've brought in more companies. Garmin is there, they want to be close to the university. They want the talent coming out of the university, they want to work on the research. TopCon, and those are just a few examples of the different companies. More of the innovative, probably young startup companies, not so much Garmin, but like TopCon that are wanting to be close to the universities and have a community where they have the talent to bring into their organizations. Of course, MBAF is certainly a large job, we're bringing in many, many jobs. The Bio Security Research Institute is located there. And the campus grain, or the College of Ag campus grain facilities are located in there, which plays a key role in our global food system initiatives. Kansas State University has the expertise, the drive for the innovation, and the collaborative relationships both with industry and government leaders such as yourselves to help create extraordinary benefits for Kansas and for our country. The motivation behind this particular district reinforces our resolve to be leaders in research as well as developing talent. Talent for exciting new careers and good-paying jobs, jobs that could be right here in Manhattan. And tonight's request will help us move, move us forward in the next step of the infrastructure that brings us one more step closer to the potential of realizing this North Campus Corridor master plan. We appreciate your support very much. There's any questions?
Thank you, Linda, I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thanks.
Anything for Linda? Are there any other public comments? Please state your name and address.
Jeremy Needorder, I'm a Senior Associate Athletics Director for K-State Athletics, and thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to come and say thank you to you, Mayor, and the rest of the commissioners for the past support of the college phase and to get your support for the future phase for Phase 9 and 10. And I just want to, I just want to let you guys know again, I was here to to comment on Phase 6, but when we were all tied together with this partnership, we all looked at the safety factors that Brian and Jason commented on. And just to get to a little bit more of the weeds, what really drove us was is they talked about the accident factor off the road in '22. And most of those accidents are turning into athletics, right, or off the drive. So those impact our student athletes, our coaches, our employees, right? And then, and then the other factor is is those pedestrian paths. The existing pedestrian paths along College and Kimball were all at four-foot sidewalks or six-foot sidewalks. All of those sidewalks are now being extended to a 10-foot sidewalk and all being lit by a ped pole. So with with the pedestrian traffic, the widening of the sidewalks, the accidents, and the new ped crossing, it's not only going to prove it for football game days when we have 50,000 peoples in the stands, but also on the day-to-day traffic. As we work with the city, the university, on the ride-share programs on our parking lots, and also the bus stops. The bus stops are going to be a huge contributing factor to the the city of Manhattan, the university, because those are going to be only used for game days, they're going to be used by the ADA, the parking rides, Uber, taxis, everything on the day-to-day and the football games. So I just want to let you guys know, Athletics is going to be by your guys' side and continue to support the the master plan and hope we get that recommendation from you guys. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you for speaking this evening. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments and come back to the commissioners. Any commissioner comments before we have a motion? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we authorize you and the city clerk to execute a line relocation agreement with EverG to relocate overhead electric lines in an estimated amount of $695,510. A construction contract in the amount of $692,142 with Larson Construction of Manhattan, Kansas, for installation of underground infrastructure, and a city-state agreement with KDOT for the cost share program. And approve Resolution Number 091520-B, amending the payment of the improvement costs for the Kimball Avenue from, for the Kimball Avenue, from College Avenue to Dennison Avenue/North Campus Corridor, Phase 9, Project ST 1908.
I second the motion, thank you. Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Okay, I believe that's it for the evening, we are adjourned, thank you.